He's resigned. Okay, and he's on, um, he's got, let me pull my. All right, I'm going to call, oh wait, I'll wait till Russ is back. Okay. All right, this is, I'm gonna call to order the April first, April Fool's Day, uh, meeting of the Webster Planning Board. So let's do attendance first.
John, Julie.
Adam Locke.
Oh, Marlo Herrick.
Susan Youngs.
Teresa Finnmore.
And Russell Tetrault.
All right, so, uh, let's see.
I will.
The first thing on our agenda is manual restructuring of the board, explain that.
So, every year, after town meeting, we usually elect a new chair and a vice chair. So the board has to select.
Susan?
Oh, Marlo made a motion.
Yep, oh, I did, Marlo makes a motion to appoint Susan as chair, any seconds?
I second it.
Yeah, you've got it?
And I, I think Addie should be the.
Uh, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was easy, next?
We have to have a vice chair as well.
Oh, okay.
And Teresa just nominated Addie.
Yeah, Addie?
What's that?
The vice chair.
Like if I'm gonna be gone?
Yep.
I'm in charge?
Yes.
You are.
No, I think Teresa would be a good one for that, just in case. She's always sufficient and she's got her.
And she's even got a laptop out? I mean, she makes us look like.
And she is on it. So, let's make Teresa do it.
I talk to that.
You're it.
It's once a month. All in favor?
Well, it's not even once a month, it, it's only if I'm gone.
Oh, that's right, that's right, well, you won't do a lot of that, right?
And guess what?
Yeah, yeah.
In, uh, June, I will certainly be gone.
Me too, I, actually, I will be too.
Oh, and we added one more person who's here?
I was actually thinking of stepping down.
Two more people that are here.
If some of the alternate, if an alternate wanted to step up.
Oh, we need, we need you.
And Teresa, I think it's a good idea for you to be.
Now that we've lost Craig. Because our June meeting will be June third, I'm gonna be up in Maine, I have a daughter who's having a baby due date on thirtieth of May.
Don't worry, you don't have a baby. Here's a packet right here.
Yeah, and I'm gonna be going back to Kentucky in June, so, I will be either.
So we still need to make sure we have decided the vice chair.
What's going on?
Who's vice chair?
Um, Teresa.
Any motion with Marlo, it's a second?
All in favor? Teresa is assistant chair, but Craig has had to step down.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's resigned.
Become chair.
Yeah, lucky me.
Yeah, and then Teresa's gonna do the assistant.
At least. Eventually, I want my pin back, what? The, um, and you should wanna sign that card too, it's somewhere my pin went with it.
Well, it could be that one?
No, it's a blue pin, where did my pin go? Somebody stick it in their pocket?
Nope, I'm checking.
No.
Addie, did you take her pen?
It might be.
That's mine.
Ah, I love it, I like being blue.
I had one too that's blue, I think.
Well, of course, guess where it came from, medical license.
I saw it.
All right, so, next item is our, um, there's a driveway permit extension request.
So this is for, we did a sub, a subdivision for the Noltons up on eight seventy, eight, eight seventy-five Battle Street, the old Fisher House. And they were putting in a second driveway on the other side of the hill for the new lot. And due to legal mumbo jumbo for getting a clear deed for the property, there's some distant relatives that are arguing that they should have.
Oh, really?
Rights to the property. So they're in court settling that, they haven't been able to start construction or get any permitting done. So they're asking for a two-year extension while they sort that out.
Okay, do we need a formal motion?
Yes.
I'd like to move to approve the extension of the driveway permit for, what's the name?
The Noltons.
Noltons.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, sorry.
What, oh.
I can't vote still, it's a very, because it's.
Okay, I don't know.
More than five, or?
Well, do we have all our?
How many are we, what's our sort of limit?
Five.
Well. The card for Craig. Um, because right now, we only have one, two, three, four regular members, right?
Correct, so.
So you gotta pick an alternate who you want to vote, I think.
So an alternate needs to be brought up to vote, and then we have to decide which alternate. Usually you go with the most senior alternate becomes the next board member.
Most senior by longest serving alternate?
By longest serving, but we have two alternates that joined at exactly the same time.
Either of you guys like to become a full member?
I don't know.
That's what I said, I told them, I think I told Dean in my office, or it was you, like both.
Well, let's have, Dean, you wanna become a full member? All right, so now we have our, so we still have two alternates, is that okay with you?
Yeah, okay, yeah, so Dean will be the, so I'll have to get that paperwork in too.
Full time.
And when the rest of us leave, then you guys. All right. So, uh, when should we put in the Edison shade?
I mean, we can do it now, or, I mean, it might be helpful, because Edison's here.
Yeah, let's do, let's do that, did you all get the email? About, um, the letter?
Well, no, I put it in the correspondence for the package, so they could be.
Yeah.
There's a copy of the letter in there, if you wanna take a look, quick look at it, so. This has been ongoing for a while, for the people that have been on the planning board for a little bit. Edison's came before the board about two years ago to get a driveway permit. There was questions about wetlands on the property. So we told him we wouldn't grant him a permit until he went out and had the wetlands looked at in the property, so we knew where it wasn't going, which he did go do. Came back with the drawing where the wetlands are, with the member from DES who had looked at it, saying, this is where the wetlands are, this is where a driveway can go in.
Do you even have like a, a, there's not a drawing, huh? Yeah, right.
I did go get it, but it's in my.
Well, I just, I just, I know, I was here from the beginning, I just, I was just, I'm, I was curious, I mean, I'm not gonna argue with DES.
Right, and DES, they did all that part, it was granted. He constructed that driveway, but it never got final approval. And there's been a lot of back and forth between me and Edison over the years about that, because he was concerned that the driveway permit was not signed. And, and I can speak to his reasoning for not signing it, I know why Paul's, I think the reasoning is the same as yours, didn't feel comfortable with signing it.
Paul, Paul King and I were in charge of the driveways at the time, and Addie went out with me twice.
And I walked it with Craig too.
And we went out there and we showed him where the driveway could go. And then, some buildings ended up getting too close to the boundaries, so before we issued him. We showed him where that went, and then I'm pretty sure he came back and told Russell that he wasn't gonna do a driveway. Then all of a sudden, stuff started getting filled in, and if I recall, I talked to Russell about that, and then Russell got a hold of him and all, and then, hey, you got a driveway there now. So then, I didn't sign the driveway, um, construction, because every time you talk to somebody, it was a different idea, and, um. I think I took Addie out there, I think it was twice.
Yeah, I know, we went one week, one time.
And.
That was before anything even happened.
Yeah, and then. Unit ever source moved the telephone pole. And I still think, I haven't got out. It to take the tape, but I'm pretty sure the driveway regs say it's twelve-foot driveway, correct? And it might be, but I don't believe it.
What is it?
I don't, I.
You mean width wise, yeah?
Yeah.
Are we, are we, are we nine, ten?
I don't, I, I, I didn't, I can't tell you for sure.
Okay.
And then the other thing he did was, he dumped a bunch of gravel, it was, the driveway permit was for the left side of the lot.
Right, I didn't know about that.
He, he dumped a bunch of gravel, supposedly because it, he didn't want it to be a mud pit walking through. Problem is, I, I went before the meeting, it's twenty-three foot wide, that gravel that he put.
So at the, up on the, up on the street, did you measure that?
It's at least twenty-three feet wide. The gravel that.
Oh, the new driveway that we're not even talking about now?
Yes.
Yeah, we haven't got.
That's what he's, he's, this was mostly about.
So.
He says it's not a driveway.
Well.
This new one.
Right. He, what he says, in what I see. Because. The town of Webster in Pillsbury Lake, they're not right of ways, the town owns the land. So, if it's a three-rod right-of-way, a rod is sixteen and a half feet. So that's forty-nine and a half feet. So you cut that in half, twenty-five feet. Your tar's ten feet, so that gives you fifteen feet off to the edge of the tar that the town still owns. And nobody has the right to fill that in or do anything to it, it's not theirs.
Correct.
And he's got it filled right in. And. I guess, I thought that's where the driveway permits came in was, so you could tell the person, no, I mean, he's dug a ditch. Out behind that, by hand, he didn't, I'm pretty sure, but he's changed the flow of the water. In the right-hand side where the new house is, when Paul and I did that for Pete, I'm pretty sure it was Granite Roots that built that. Pete didn't want anything to do with that lot, because he couldn't build anything, it was just useless to him. But. I'm getting off track. But, now the new driveway, which he says isn't a driveway, but it's got a camper parked on it.
It's in the town right-of-way by the sound.
Well, it's not a right-of-way, the town owns the land, well, it is, I guess it is.
So it's in the towns.
It's in the town, on the town land.
Town land. Yeah.
So by rights.
Shouldn't be there.
You could go down there and.
Dig it up.
I mean, even if you went back to the boundary pin, I don't believe the boundary pin's fifteen feet, but I know it's at least ten feet off the side of the road through there. Because the road sometime wasn't always built right dead in the center, some to the left, some to the right, so. Uh, you go, you find the boundary pins, you can do anything you want on the ins.
You mean the depth of boundary pin, or the one, the side?
From, from the side of the tar into the boundary pin.
Okay. Does that, yeah, the side he built?
That, that boundary pin, when Paul, Paul and I found it, was in the water. Back in there, so. I think before you go ahead and. Do anything with the first driveway, he needs to do away with, or he can leave it. In on his land if he wants to fill that in, if he fills in wetlands, that's his trouble, not mine, but.
What would, what would be our requirement to consider it closed?
Make it go away.
You mean dig up what he's got for material there, but you just said that he could fill it, and then, I, I'll go to you, I wish I could see something.
Well, Emmett had suggested in my office maybe doing a site visit, and that might not be a bad idea.
I think, I think that would be, and then we're not getting in trouble and we're all looking at it.
Yeah, 'cause I, I could remember the first time, and that was like.
Down in.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you guys had said, hey, listen, or you told me, hey, you might put a culvert there, blah, blah, blah. You know, so water could still flow, but we were pretty much all telling him, hey, that's still probably wetlands, but, so then he got a wetland scientist.
Yeah.
DES to come out and tell him it wasn't, is what it sounds like to me, or whatever, whatever. And, and then, then he went and tried to move the driveway somewhere else, yeah.
Well, I never got.
Well, he hasn't moved it, he's added a second one to it.
He added a second.
And that's what you have pictures of.
And then, this all started because Edison, me, had conversation, because he calls me every once in a while to see where he needs to do and what is going on. Of what needs to get done in order to finalize the driveway on this other property, and which is why I brought it up to Emmett, and Emmett.
When you say finalize, finalize the one that's there now?
Get the final approval for the driveway that was.
For the one that we approved.
We approved.
Okay, okay.
You guys approved it, Paul and I did it.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Emmett was, answer was, put the apron on, close off the other driveway, and then the final construction approval will be granted.
Right, and make sure it's twelve feet.
Right.
At that, and then if you look that up, your driveway rigs, and it, it doesn't seem like much, but you stand on the road to the bottom of that, it's more than five percent. No, but, I didn't make the rules.
No, 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 I know, I agree with you, 'cause I know what you're talking about.
I went out and did a driveway today, looked at a driveway today on New Hampshire Drive. I mean, it, the guy wants to build a garage up there, but it's ten, it's, it's at least eight or ten percent up. And I told him, you need to talk to Russell, and make a, um, talk to you guys on the planning board to see what you guys can do, it's not my say.
No, no, I, I understand.
The reason why that's in place is so we can get fire apparatus up to it.
Yeah.
Well, five percent isn't a lot, ten, ten is a lot, five isn't that much.
I mean, if you look around in New Hampshire, anywhere in this town, we, there's ten percent driveways everywhere. So, but that's my own opinion on a situation, and I know what you're saying. No, but I, I do agree, but where do you build in New Hampshire where you're gonna be lost in five percent, you might as well give it up.
Nowhere anymore.
No, that's right, so I'm just giving you my little two cents, I'm not saying, I'm, it's not following the rules, I just, that's something that should.
But, but the regulations do say, if the lot is, if you just can't get around it, then sometimes you can get an exception to the rule.
Right, and the way the rules work is if it's less than three hundred feet, it's one of the shorter driveways, there's specific crowning that has to be done in the regulations for the driveway that's shorter. And I assume.
I think, I think the smartest thing to do down there on Centennial Drive is to do a site visit.
So basically, right now, he has two driveways, is that what I'm?
Well, he's, he claims that the gravel one isn't a driveway, that he just wanted to walk on it, except.
Right.
There's a trailer, his neighbor's trailer, which he let, he, as a kindness, he let it park there, but to me, that's a driveway, it's twenty-three feet wide.
And so, so like, on here, it says he took and combined both lots into one big lot, is that correct?
He did do a merger.
Okay, so he can only, he's, one driveway anyway, right? Anyway, you slice it.
They combine.
Did it become a building lot because he combined them?
It would've been a, build, two building lots.
Okay, anyways, so he combined them to make it one, and instead of two.
So there probably was a cut-in, it was a lot, is that what I'm gathering, at one point, so he just drive off to? The, usually a lot of lots, they're just, it's, you can bring your pickup truck, or they.
When he, when he first, when we first looked at it, there was like a dip down end, and we told him it would need a culvert, and wetlands would have to get a permit from, you know. You'd have to get a culvert permit, whether DES says it's good, bad, or ugly, right, you, you've gotta get a, a permit for a culvert, you, we can't just go.
Right, and he didn't follow our directions.
No, I mean, that's, there's, there's definitely a history here that creates it a little harder to be, A, workable, when you, every time we turn around, it's one thing and then he does another.
Right.
That's, am I wrong? I may, maybe I'm not supposed to say that, but I, I know I get that feeling, 'cause I'm on, I, I like to think that everybody's property, they should be able to access.
Right, and we, we agreed to that, I believe, and, but, but now it's like he's just pushing the buttons a little harder, and I don't think that works out too good.
So, it seems that, that what we have to do is, it wouldn't be a bad idea for another site visit.
Yeah.
Um, you were.
I'm now the, you know, driver with Emmett.
Yeah, because it was you and Craig, right, with Emmett?
No, uh, well, Craig was just filling in for a little while, after John King.
So, you should do that, I mean, anybody else who wants to go along, I'm sure they'd be happy.
Yeah, I would like to.
Yeah, I think we need to set a time and meet down there and, and discuss it and look at it together.
But officially, if there are more than two of us there, we have to call it a meeting.
Which is fine, we've done it before, it's not the end of the world. Um, though, if we're gonna go on the property, I don't think you even need to go on.
We don't need to go on the property, we can stand in the street, see everything we need.
Right. And I did tell Edison this would be a possibility, that the board would wanna go out and take a look at it.
Why it might be somewhat important, it's just because it's so much history here of.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do this, and then that doesn't happen, am I wrong?
Right, no, you're right.
So, so, I mean, I, and, and we wanna be fair to whoever, I, 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 I'm not speaking for everybody, but I wanna be fair to people, but I, I do.
We don't wanna be unreasonable.
That, right, we don't wanna be unreasonable, but we don't also wanna be told one thing and then do another, and then told one thing and do another, 'cause that feels like that's what's happening.
And then as, and then as time goes by, then it's like, oh, well, it's been this way for five years now, so.
And it's been going on.
Yeah, three, I've, well, I've been on since, when, that was the first, right, when we started, right?
Can you send me some history numbers?
Yeah, I can give them a minute.
So it needs to be nipped.
Yeah.
All right, so site visit.
I mean, you send it to her, remind me.
Yeah, I can send it to her.
I want off this little small ring.
When do you and Emmett wanna do this, and should we try to get more people there?
Well, I think we should just set a time and a date to do.
Oh, I've seen it, I mean, you, I think, I, I, I think in my eyes.
I'd like to hear your opinion, though, because I don't know the history.
Well, my opinion is, before we. He wants to finalize the first driveway that Paul and I worked on three or four years ago.
Yeah.
Which we didn't sign, Paul and I didn't sign that, because every, every, it just didn't feel good about things, I guess you could say, or. Nothing was the way it was supposed to be, and then, with, the biggest reason, I guess, we didn't sign it is. He wasn't gonna put a driveway in there, he gave up on the driveway, and then all of a sudden, the driveway was there.
That's exactly right.
And then the slot, then.
That's what he came back, did look all cool, he didn't look all that cool when he came back, to be honest with you.
He came back and met with you folks.
That's right.
One night I wasn't here, you guys, or I shouldn't say you guys, 'cause that's not polite, but you people. Granted him the construction part of it.
Mm-hmm.
And it's never been finished.
Right, well, he did, I remember that.
So, when, when would be a good time to?
I have Monday the seventh open, if that's.
That's select board meeting.
Or it could, it doesn't have to be in the evening, it could be in the afternoon or the morning, is it just you and me, or we?
I think if, if other members of the board are interested in going, we should, we should.
No, I think, I mean, we can go look at it, but I think. I think this has gone on long enough, I think we need to look at it, everybody gets to see it, instead of Rob and I coming back and.
Yeah.
And pictures do look good, but the real thing is the real thing.
Yeah, exactly.
And if you wanna do that, Emmett, I can, I even have time, maybe first thing Friday morning, or something like that, we can look at it, and then if the seventh works before select board meeting, we can meet to look at it as a group.
Would you be open to a noon time?
I don't care, do you? So noon on the seventh for the group, and do you have time Friday, it could be in the afternoon, two afternoon, or morning?
Seventh is what, Monday.
Yeah, it's a Monday.
The seventh, but before they go, we can go, and I can get brought up to speed on what you saw, or?
Yeah.
That, that would be good.
That's Mon, yeah, Monday.
Monday the seventh.
At noon time.
For everybody, yeah, and, but Friday, we could just sneak over, or I.
Yeah, I'll give you, I'm gonna be working, I'll probably be working on the bridge, so I can, um, sneak off from that, 'cause tomorrow. They didn't work on the bridge today, because they had a safety class.
Yeah.
Tomorrow afternoon, it's Thursday, so, yeah, noon time, or midday, or just give me a buzz, and we can set a time.
Okay.
But I, we can look at it.
And then we'll call a, a planning board meeting.
I will post it tomorrow, and say we're gonna meet on the street, and then we'll.
And you're taking the seventh.
On the seventh, at noon, high noon.
Two meetings that day, Marlo, what's gonna happen?
Well, not just that, we have an open house on the Tuesday, and I'm not sure that, I probably, I love to say, oh, no problem, then I'll be like, oh my God, give me a gun. But, I mean, I guess I don't need to be there, but, yeah, that's tough for me.
All right. So, we're ready to move on?
Moving to the next item.
Which is, planning board objectives for 2025. I'm curious, I've been reading in the newspaper about some, uh, proposed state laws.
No, there are a lot.
That, that the legislature is going to set a minimum lot size for the state.
Correct, and they're gonna make detached ADUs by right, for the entire state.
Up to nine hundred and fifty square feet, is that right?
I would have to double check.
I think, I think it is, I think, I think that's what I read, too.
Have they actually passed it yet, the legislature?
Crossover day is happening soon, so we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Yeah, and then, of course, it's whether Governor Ayer will sign it.
Correct.
But, was it gonna be a two-acre?
I think it was two acres.
Yeah, I was, I was talking with Bill, yeah, Bill Junior and Bill Senior on, yeah, on Sunday. And they, um, were talking, they asked me what, you know, we were visiting about it, but. Now, can your conservation committee, or anybody, select board or something, put their opinion into the governor, or?
When they have a hearing.
And you, this board to put their opinion into the governor.
When they have a hearing, you can go put your opinion in.
Because, uh, I know we tried to lower our, our, uh, minimum lot size to three acres last year, right?
Yes, yes.
And no, anybody who showed up said, no, they don't want it. We, it, it may be taken out of our hands. Even if we, sometimes it seems the legislature is not overly willing to take, even though ninety percent of the people who show up are against what they're gonna do, I haven't noticed that that has made much difference in a bunch of things recently.
Maybe more people speaking out, uh, their representatives, and doing a piece of.
Or fewer people going down on voting day to vote.
Yes, that would help.
Would help.
So. I mean, that would make a big change in Webster.
It would.
But I don't know that we can do anything about it now. What other things?
Well, you said you wanted to bring up cluster development.
Yeah, we talked before about cluster development as an, as a way to. Make it so that there could be more housing in Webster without really changing. The sort of overall feel. Because it wouldn't be house, 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 house along the main roads.
Well, it will be if the legislature pushes that two-acre piece through.
And then I know Marlo's brought up looking at the driveway regulations again. 'Cause you, 'cause of the grade.
Right, I think, I think the grade is my biggest issue, but, you know, I mean, like Emmett says, you gotta, I just don't, I just, by looking at the other towns, we, we are the most, you know, I. I hate to say the word unreasonable, I wouldn't say unreasonable, but the most, the most strict, and I just, I just, once I realized the rule, I, everywhere I go, I go. Oh, that's one, I can even tell what five percent is, and I'm not that bright, so.
I do know the driving.
Your new bridge, your new bridge is a hundred feet long. And it's five feet higher on one side than it is on the other, so that's a five percent grade and a hundred feet.
On the bridge.
On the bridge.
I just, I, I think, I think we could make that a little bit, I think changing that part of the rule would be my, would be my biggest thing. Just, just to make it a little bit more, to any of us, I mean, we all have property that.
Yeah.
You know, you wanna, I don't know, like, we all love it to be, always be family land, I mean, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm the, probably, I live in the best spot, we all have really good places that we live by. We also want other, you know, our family members to have places to live, so. And I know it doesn't mean they can't put a driveway in, it, there's exceptions, but you get the wrong people in the wrong place in the wrong spot, and that could be, nope.
So is that something that other people would like on our, on our sort of?
So we're at five percent now, is that?
Yes.
And what are we looking to go to?
I think it should be ten. That's better.
Ten is kinda steep, what do you, I mean, I, I think.
What's Warner?
So, I'm, and I'm not even going by the towns, I think our crank, not crank angle, our. Approach angle on our bumpers, aren't they specked out at, is that eight percent?
Yeah, backing it off the flat, if it went to eight, eight percent, I mean, that driveway.
I don't think we can go further than our apparatus.
You, you folks turned around the other day at Ten Call Road and backed into there, and that was all but hitting.
Yeah, and that's probably what, six or seven percent, maybe?
Where's that driveway?
Where's it?
First driveway on the right.
Oh, yeah, oh, the one that's right there, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 'cause I remember, they changed their driveway because of where, what.
Yeah, because it was too steep, and they moved it up and put it on an angle for us.
So while I'd like to go up a little bit, I think we still gotta cap it at something reasonable that our stuff can get to. And I think that's probably gonna be.
I still say ten.
Our apparatus is specked to an eight, that just means, you know, fairly scraping by, if there's. Our apparatus is spec two and eight, that just means, you know, barely scraping by, if there's a, a nice, or half hit to snow, you're hitting something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so we don't have to decide it today, but if we put it on, on future.
No. But more than five, I'd be willing to do more than five.
Yeah, it's something to do research for at a future meeting, and then have this question.
Yeah. Alright, uh, any other things that we might want to put on our agenda for when we have time? Other things that, that we've, are there other things that we've had, um, complaints on, or?
I think, I think we should take a look at the permitting in the town, 'cause we were talking about that earlier, 'cause I think that is something that needs to be addressed, at least when it comes to floodplain management, 'cause that's something that's a little difficult with the FEMA management, if you're not required to get a permit for any structures, but some people are required if they're in a floodplain, and it's hard to get the information out to them, and I've been trying to think of ways to get that out. And I know we've had comments off and on about maybe adopting a building code, but I don't know, you know, that's what I expected.
No.
That's because, don't worry, your driveway can only be this, you can't build there anyways.
We're here to judge, we're just saying.
Right, so you know.
I'm making a joke, but I'm not really, I kinda, I tell people, I said, we have.
Correct.
We're, we're.
You can build whatever you want, like. The driveway is not, listen to me, it's a percent, but.
Well, the guy down there on New Hampshire Drive, it's, it's.
Right, well, I mean, he literally does this, correct?
No, it's going up, but, and he just wants to build a garage up there, and it didn't have the har- and, and he bought all three lots, 'cause they live across the street, but it didn't have the heart to tell him that's why he bought that land, and it hadn't been sold before, because it was more than five percent, and nobody, you know, it's all ledge.
Yeah.
You can see the ledge right there by that culvert pipe, you found it on that before, too.
Yeah.
So, I told him he needed to get ahold of Russell, and then making a thing to talk to you for a special.
A special exception because of that.
If he couldn't get it.
So, if he blasted in there, could he bring that down?
Yeah, but bla- it's money, and they don't, yeah, money will do anything.
I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Tell that people in my office all the time, can make most things work, if you got enough money to throw at it.
True, like the people down.
Twelve grand will get you a pounder there for forty hours.
Right, exactly.
Dustin, Dustin?
You run it yourself.
Dustin Road?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, they had, they meant, they had to redo their driveway, and that was a pretty penny.
Yeah.
Where's that?
The one on Dustin Road?
The one that, that, yeah, yeah.
That one?
The old off.
Yeah, they probably zigzags for the approach and the.
Well, they, they, no, they, nobody liked their zigzag, they wanted to go up, I, whatever, it's just, yeah.
I guess the question, too, was, do we have a town master plan?
We do, and that gets updated in two years.
So, as far as where development is and all that.
So, that's gonna be a next year project, we start that next year.
So, and we have to redo the, um, the driveway thing, right, that state? And she said, that thing that passed.
We have to take a look at, because there is a contradiction in the ordinance now between grandfathering and that the grandfather of a structure, say, you're allowed to keep something for two years, and that's longer than the two years that's allowed for the grandfathered structure, so we need to make those two jive, or figure out some language to put in there to make sure it doesn't contradict it. That's the thing the attorney brought up after, or the new attorney brought, the first attorney didn't catch it, this next attorney caught it, so.
Would the, would the, would the reason that, that most people want as, us as a board to have a say after the state approves it, is that mainly for this, for fire? Is that mainly why?
You know that you mean to have the state approve it.
Meaning, it's coming off a state road, so it's their, it's their baby, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's their baby with the culverts, or damage to their road, or whatever, is our main reason, our main reason that,
Yes, for fire, yes.
'Cause, 'cause there's a lot of towns that, if the state approves it, then they approve it, they don't, they don't get involved, actually, and I just was trying to remember, was it mainly that?
Yeah, no, it's so we can have our turnouts every three hundred feet, and, uh, and to make sure that the driveway is built
Three hundred feet, yeah.
the way it's supposed to, to hold up a ladder truck, or
Yeah.
seventy thousand pounds of water.
And we already decide, you know, we already approved it, we just have to make our.
No, no, I was just trying, I was just trying to remember, yeah, I thought that was.
Yeah, yeah, that, uh, because, I mean, we make it up, we're, we're putting these new rules and regulations in place, but we have so many driveways that don't have permits. They're all over the place.
And we don't wanna add more of them that are out of compliance.
What's that?
We don't want to add more of them that are.
Correct, and, I mean, it's, nothing gets done about it. This guy here on this side of the street, he comes and does everything right, the guy across the street just goes ahead and does it, and there's no enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you got, the, uh, yeah, I could.
I'm sure you could list off all kinds of.
I could name, I could name fifteen right now that's happened in the last two years.
Money, money to get an officer.
So, we do have, we do have a code enforcement officer?
We have a position approved, and the funding, and the job description going before the select board at the next meeting.
But I don't how code enforcement officer, I mean, what's he gonna do, go out when there's an illegal driveway, what?
Well, it, it could be that, it could be an illegal junkyard, um.
I mean, your, your select board, your select board can they're the, when it comes to an illegal driveway, to put their foot down.
No, I thought it was us.
No.
No.
At, at the end of the day.
Oh, at the end of, okay.
At the end of the day.
And when we put our foot down, it's a ladder. So, I, we put our foot down.
But then if they don't comply?
Then what happens?
There's no.
Right, goes to court.
It goes to court.
Then you have police to enforce.
Kinda, but I, yeah, it has to go to court.
Well, the problem is, it's not criminal, it's, it's zoning, so.
Yeah. And then, and then, once you do that, that means it costs us money, and it costs them money, so it costs both people money.
It does.
It's not, it's not that they won't have to pay, but, and then hope for the outcome, so, you know, one thing we talk about.
Alright.
These are people that apply or ask for variances, or go to the.
Yeah, that's all they have to do, because it's, like I said, I don't think.
And like you said, if we're reasonable.
We're not, we're, I mean, we're not unreasonable, and I don't think the select board is either, so.
No. There's exceptions for unique.
Like I told a gentleman today on New Hampshire Drive, I said, just go see Russell, he'll set up a thing with the planning board, and go down and sit with him, and explain what you're up against, I said, they're good people to work with, and probably it will all happen.
If we can figure out how to get it to work, we'll figure out how to get it to work.
It is hard, though, 'cause it, you got reasonable people in this world, and you got unreasonable people.
And that's the person.
We can all be unreasonable sitting here, and then, at some point, we could be unreasonable people.
So, do we have, do we have other things we want on our agenda?
This is just so I know what I can prepare for, and do a little research. Do we wanna kinda consider what it would look like for the town to have two acre zoning?
I think, I think it, we ought to at least be thinking about it, since it's.
And then another thing that was brought up in the past is maybe adding a lake commercial district around Battle Street. That was another thing that had been brought up, 'cause if you look at where the businesses, the majority of businesses are in town, like Melon Company and all that, they're on Battle Street. And just adding a lake commercial district.
Well, they have to be, because the road agent posts the roads in the spring, and you can't get there, so then, gotta be on a main road.
Right.
It's gotta be on one twenty-seven.
It's gotta be on one twenty-seven. But that's where most of the businesses are anyway, like Edward Mills, the, you know.
Yeah.
But that's another thing that's been brought up in the past.
And that's in the master plan that has a section for commercial?
I don't think there is in the master plan, I think the master plan basically says they wanna keep the town the way it is forever.
That's not really a plan, that's a holding.
That's all.
It, it's going to change, we're just supposed to steer it and help it to change slowly and appropriately.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
I don't know, you say it's gonna change, but you know what, I get thinking about all the land that's around in this town, and I'm gonna tell you something right now, I don't think it's gonna. I don't think it's changing in the last few years. Any, and, and I'm gonna tell you where it's the only place that will change is Pillsbury Lake, 'cause like, you start driving around, and a lot of the lots are, they're not for sale.
Well, I was just gonna say, a lot of the bigger, a lot of the bigger stretches of land are owned by, like Betsy Janeway, that's all going in conservation.
How you look at it. Abby Rock.
Abby Rock Defeller, that's all going in conservation.
Yeah.
I would say the majority of lots.
Like, like.
And we can't, we can't be naive to, to not realize things change, right, I mean, there's eminent domain, there's people that own land, and ninety-three went in, like it or not.
Yeah.
Right, eighty-nine went in, through people's farms and properties.
That is true.
When the state wants to do something, I don't give a damn if it's conservation or what, and there is a crisis, and we gotta be aware of that, so we can't just let the rich of the rich live here, 'cause that's all that we'll be able to afford someday, if we just keep hoarding stuff. Um, we do gotta make appropriate con- um, appropriate actions to, to allow our children and grandchildren stuff to keep growing here, we can't just buy up the land and
Well, that's one of the reasons. Discussing the cluster.
Sit down and hope it doesn't change, and I know what you're saying.
Yeah, no, it's.
But, but think about it this way, fifty years ago, when you were a kid, it's way different now than it was, so it's always changed.
Well, yeah, obviously, fifty years.
And, and, and it will change, so we can't be any, you can say it won't.
Yeah, around us, and the town definitely has here in fifty years, but I don't, what, what I, when you start driving around, and you look at all the tracts of land that are road frontage land, right? I know quite a few of them that own it, and it's like, I'm pretty sure that it won't change in.
Until the state, until the state.
I hear you, but the state wants two acres, and we said, fine, the state says road frontage is a hundred instead of two fifty all of a sudden, those things can change like that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, it probably could, but it's like, I, it's, I don't.
And it just takes the right people complaining. So, so we just gotta prepare and allow that, 'cause what the state's gonna do, and they've done this with other towns, what are you doing to provide for this income? What are you doing to provide for low-income housing and elderly housing, and if we're not doing appropriate things to allow, or at least plan for it, guess what, Eddie? It's gonna change, and it's gonna change not the way we want, you, you may, we may be too old to see it, 'cause it may be thirty, forty years from now,
Yeah.
but it will change, and we've gotta be at the forefront to guide it.
It'd be better to make, make decisions ourselves.
Yes, we want this section town like this, or we're only allowed this, so this can start happening slow the way we want it, or if this does happen, we want water supply where we need it, because we know someday it could be more, whatever, we need to be, that's why it's a planning board, not hope nothing's gonna happen, 'cause then you have.
It's not what we hope, if it doesn't, but it's like, what I see for the land, the big tracts of land that got conservation easements on them, what are you gonna do with that?
When great-grandparent, our great-grandkids take it over someday, they're not gonna give a damn about.
Yeah, but, but they can't change it, they can't take it out. You can't change it if it's in it.
Their observations, some of them are perpetual.
Right.
Most of them are.
That it goes with the property when it's.
Until the state allows, because they see that this is the hindrance, well, that's good.
Yeah, that's true, it could change.
I, I, I'm not saying it's going, I'm just saying we can't just lock down and say nothing's gonna happen, 'cause I don't think we can.
I don't wanna disagree with Rob, because that, that could change.
I think so, uh, the other thing that we were talking about earlier is, you said, state, that by law, building codes, the state building codes apply, even if we don't have one, but
Correct.
does it make sense for the town to say, our building code is the state building code, is that what you were saying?
So, that's one of the ways, that kinda goes off of the whole having permits, and, but then again, there's a whole lot of stuff that goes with having a building code. You need to have somebody to enforce the building code, you need to have.
People.
People, that's what applies down to. 'Cause that's what happens when you get the building code, you need to have the people in place to issue the permits, to do electrical work, which we do some of that already, not a lot, but we do do some. It's a different ballgame.
And I, what I, I guess, I guess what I'd like to see, I mean, we have people, y- you have a, you have a little house, it's all approved and livable, and then then all of a sudden, there's a foundation for it, four times, five times, six times bigger than the little house, and two stories, three stories high, it's a brand-new house on a little addition that they're gonna tear off and throw away later on anyways, and they didn't need a permit, they didn't need a, they didn't need nothing, I've seen it happen in this town, um, a couple of different times. No inspections, no nothing.
We don't have if it's fifty percent bigger, or anything like that.
There's nothing anywhere.
And another thing that I would like to see is there's nothing in any of the ordinances in town, how high somebody can build a building, somebody could come into this town and build a five-story building, we got twenty, twenty-four foot extension ladder.
And generally, when people come in to build, they ask me how high they can go, and I say, you can go as high as the fire truck can reach, and that's it.
But is there any, is there any, there's no?
There's nothing in the ordinance.
No, but don't you, doesn't that make, I mean, we got a ladder truck come over the turkey and a tower and conquered, but that takes time to get here,
It makes total sense.
if somebody's in the, in a four-story window, and you're only getting to the second one.
Right.
Does that make sense, Rob?
Yeah, no, that's.
Is that our, is that, is it the planning board that would do that?
You could put a height ordinance, in fact, that's how zoning ordinance came into be, was height ordinances.
I mean, we've talked about that a couple of years, I think I even talked to that with Mrs. Larson.
That's exactly what happened a lot when they put the racetrack in, they're forced to put in an eighty-five foot ladder truck.
Which they bought the first one, but then they don't buy it from there, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you're on the hook for it.
So, that's something we can break down, and looking for a higher limits amendment.
I guess if they, you did go three stories, you would have to put that in there, at least to have a fire escape, I mean, if somebody wanted to get
They wanted to build a.
Son of a steel, put that in, I mean, if somebody wanted to go three stories, I mean, it's, it is.
And I do like the idea of the fifty percent, of the additions bigger than that.
Just something, yeah, 'cause it's an addition if you're adding on less than fifty percent, but if you're doubling it, that's not an addition, that's.
That's a rebuild.
That's a rebuild, yeah, well, so, you could maybe, uh, once again, one of those future meetings.
Right.
Put that on and.
We'll, we'll take a look at it, well, you're the chair now, so I'll talk to you what you want to put on it. And we'll, I'll take, I've taken notes of what the things that were discussed, and those were good points, and we could put that in there, and we can decide when we wanna bring it up.
When we wanna do it. Alright, should we move on? There really isn't anything left, other than approving the draft minutes from our last meeting.
Which I already have heard, they need to be amended.
Yes.
Poor Teresa, your name just.
It's a really hard name, I guess.
So, other than that, other than Teresa's name.
But also online, online thirty-one. You just need A in there, four D, A for that.
Oh, okay. Alright, so I have to go through and fix the names.
Otherwise, anybody wanna make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
I can make a motion for that.
Okay, uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, anything else for the good of the order, as they say? Alright, somebody wanna move to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Sorry.
All in favor? Aye.
Something good in yours.
So, Monday at noon, I do.
I'll post the meeting tomorrow, with the minutes from when everything happened, and the driveway.
Yep. That would be great.
Does anybody?
Are you gonna send that out, what you just said?
We didn't have to do anything, I, I think we have to put things in.
Oh, he signed the contract, Craig.
Yeah, did everybody sign it?
Who hasn't signed it, it's right here.
Curious, Paul.